All right, good evening. Today is Monday, October 17, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do you have a motion to open the meeting? Laura, second. Lori, all in favor? All right, we're going to go right into executive session for about an hour. We'll be back out at 7:30 for the public portion of the meeting. I just need a motion to enter into executive session. Lori, second. Laura, all in favor? All right, very good. See you at 7:30. All right, good evening again. It's Monday, October 17, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We already opened the meeting at 6:30 and then went into executive session to discuss some personnel and legal matters. So now we're back into the public session now. So no need to open the meeting. We've already done that. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Apologize to the folks for being a little bit late. I know we're about 10 minutes late, so I apologize for that. All right, let's get right into it. Actually, our first item is the auditor's presentation. So you're up.
Should be sitting over there.
She should go down.
Excuse me. We're just gonna...
We're gonna come over and see the screen.
That makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. So we report the audit of the capital financial statement according to the government auditing standards, and we also report the audit of the annual spending activity on according to the accordance with cash basis account. So the results of the audit, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give as owners. We did not know any, we did not identify any material inconsistencies in the current controls of this school's financial reporting. We'd like to thank the business office for all, and the other staff for all of your help and assistance in getting these projects done. As part of the audit, required to second communication letters to the board, one of those required there is to come out and put in new accounting policy. And for this year, it was as required, GAAP 7 was implemented, you know, for any reasons. This was implemented as of 7/1/2021 for the 2022 school year. There's two other additional communications, which I'd like to point out. One is required to disclose whether or not there was any cash issues as reported to the board. We did not. And there was also required to communicate whether or not we had any disagreements with management as far as finance financing, financial auditing accounts, and we did not. So we'll go through financial highlights now. The district wide currently has a net deficit of $42 million, and this is primarily related to the old debt liability, which is $47 million that makes the most of the debt. This slide here shows the budgeted actual information for the general fund. As you can see, there was a little fluctuation as the revenue was a little higher than budgeted, and the related expenditures were a little lower than budgeted. There's nothing of any significant variance. At the fund financing stage level, the general fund has a fund balance of $20 million, which went up about a million dollars prior year. The capital projects fund balance is effective debt set to $732,000, but this will be eliminated when addition, it would be $9 million of the debt. For the non-resident fund, the fund balance currently sits at $692,000, which is pretty close to what it was in prior years. Also on the back of the financial statements, you'll see our current auditing standards standard report, the yellow book audit, which is required by the state. And during this audit, we noted no material inconsistencies, focusing on deficiencies in control and melting consensus of non-defiance that has been material to the financial statement reported.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the hard work on this, and thank you for the presentation. Only question I have, it's really not a question, because I think I know the answer to it, but more for the audience. That first slide you put up about the $42 million or so deficit, can you explain what that really is? Because that's including future liabilities, right? That's essentially if the schools liquidate today, that's what they would owe. But it's not a year-to-year deficit, right?
The amount of money owed for time.
Right.
Their corporate benefit, their retire, their...
Right. Right, right. I understand that. I just want to make sure that our community understands, because that's a scary number when you see that, and it sounds like it's a year-to-year deficit. Right? Right, absolutely. Okay. That's all I have. Anybody else? Nope? All right. No, you're good?
Thank you very much. Good time, Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to comments by the board. Does anybody have any comments? I'll go, I'll start down at the end. Anything for you? Nope? Teres? Any comments?
No, I have no comments.
Lori?
No comments, other than we had a great homecoming, and the parade was wonderful, and it was great to see so many people out in the community cheering our students on as they marched through the town and in the neighborhoods. It was just so wonderful, and after coming out of this pandemic, it was particularly special. So I just want to thank our lovely school community for supporting us and just making it so great. We had parents, they had like the little microphones, and they're out. It was just really, really great. And the weather was terrific, and we could not have had a better even weather day. So just so happy to see everyone back. And Adam, the game was awesome. Our cheerleaders are fabulous. So just, this is a really great start to the school year. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually want to mention that, too. That feels like it was so long ago. I'm like, didn't we talk about this already? But it was really so well done, and so many people said it was one of the best homecomings they can remember, and I think that's a testament to, like you said, the community, the students, the staff, the faculty, but especially, I think we should recognize Mr. C., because he really knocked it out of the park.
Yeah.
So he did an awesome job, and he definitely should get, you know, recognized for that.
And our PTA.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, they were out there doing their thing, selling stuff. It was just great, really, really great.
Yeah, excellent. Laura? I know, it took all the good stuff.
So what I was gonna say, no, thank you to everybody, especially the administration, again, to the community for coming out, supporting all of our athletes, and for all the students and their spirit. It was just a wonderful weekend, and we're going to love the same. Thank you.
Yeah, ditto again. I was gonna say the same thing. The homecoming was great. I was also gonna give a shout out to Mr. C. He definitely put his touch on it this year as well, and, but all the staff, custodians always put a lot of work into this, too. So just awesome, awesome homecoming. So thank you all for that. Also wanted to thank all of our community members who answered our solicitations for board committees. I know quite a few people, some people put in asking for positions. Unfortunately, we don't have enough positions for all the people that put in, but you should be hearing soon from the district about it, the selections for those committees. But thank you to everybody that put in, and we definitely appreciate the, you know, the effort to serve and the desire to serve. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think reviewing those, it's so impressive how many people are so talented and have such like experience in our community.
A deep well to choose from.
Yes, for sure. It's very impressive.
Absolutely. Okay. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
Good evening. At our previous workshop with the Board of Education, we reflected on last year's progress toward our strategic plan and looked ahead to this school year's initiatives and goals. We reviewed data, discussed findings, and presented action plans. In our upcoming workshops, we will focus on the different pillars that constitute our strategic plan. Meanwhile, since our last meeting, we celebrated the indomitable Tuckahoe. This was seen in our festive spirit day, exciting pep rally, and high-energy parade. At our homecoming game, our Tigers took home a victory to the delight of our packed stands. We saw families from all three schools show up to celebrate this community event. The weekend continued with different athletic matchups where our kids did fantastic, our Tuckahoe Union Free School first-ever day, and our participation in the East Chester Columbus Day Parade. I do have to thank Mr. C. also, and all the administrators, teachers, and staff who were there, and the community, but I really want to thank the students. The students took part in a lot of this. They cheered our teams, they worked at our Tuckahoe Day, and they just had such fun and spirit for the school district. It was really great to see. There also were, when I say K-12, there were babies, little people who haven't even come to our school district yet, who are so excited to be part of Tuckahoe. So it's really exciting. Our staff has been engaged in high-quality professional learning aligned with our strategic plan. Mr. Keough is here tonight. He's been doing a lot of work with the staff, with our consultant from Innovative Designs for Education on brain-based learning, social-emotional support, and executive functioning. The consultant also came in and worked with our first cohort of learner-active-technology-infused classroom initiative, in which structures and lesson planning is designed for students to solve problems. Additional learning throughout the district included crisis prevention intervention, Dr. Sweeney brought that in, positive behavior interventions and support, and literary assessments. This week, new teachers will gather for a new teacher workshop as we continue to support their success. Today, we also have the district honoring today and recognizing our Board of Education. As you know, it's Board of Education Week. This week marks the beginning of that week. I am so glad that this week exists. The school board is entirely made up of volunteers, the long hours, the executive sessions, the meetings, the workshops, and the retreats. This is often a need for approval and guidance that we need from them, and this means the individuals seated up here can be called upon at unexpected times. The board guides our district with thoughtfulness, sensitivity, and professionalism. Having worked in many school districts and watched other people's meetings, I am so impressed with the way this board upholds policy, maintains decorum, and holds us all accountable. They are tireless advocates of students and champions of public education. They are committed to efficiency. This is seen in their close work with budgeting and facilities matters, and driven by what's right. And this is seen in their support of our ambitious educational initiatives. They always return to what's best for kids. So join me in celebrating this hard-working and dedicated Board of Education, and I have bought them a little gift that I would like them, at least one person, to open, because it's really cool.
Because it's really cool.
I think I got the right one this time.
Thank you. Want to show it to you? You want to open one?
Yeah. Why don't you? Yeah. He can open it.
Is it all the same?
Yeah, they're all the same.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sweatshirt? Oh, that's nice. Oh, that's cool, some swag.
Some Tuckahoe swag.
I like it.
And it says Board of Education, so that everywhere you go, you can thank them at every event.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman.
Thank you.
That's really cool. Thank you.
I am so excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. And thank you for the kind words.
Thank you.
And I also meant to say, I did see the post that was put on Facebook, you know, saying thank you to the board, so thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You could all like it on Tuckahoe Union Free School District Facebook page.
That was great. That's awesome. Thank you. Put that to good use.
We should wear our swag and take a group picture for the yearbook.
Yes.
It was Cynthia's idea. I was just...
I didn't say for the yearbook. I just said we should take a picture.
I elaborated on it.
I felt it.
All right, great. Thank you. Next is comments by our business manager.
So the Tuckahoe field is nearing completion, the Cottle Field, with just some minor finishing touches that are being done, so we're hoping to have the field sometime at the beginning of next week. So that's really exciting. The Middle High School project, which had some delays, is now, they're picking up, and steel is coming in and being installed, and ductwork is now able to be put in, so they are picking up. We also started some roof repair work, some patching over the middle high school gym this week, so that's going to continue. It's all weather-dependent, so they'll need a couple more days to finish up that area of the roof, and it's just been a good week. I'm excited about the field.
Yeah, the field looks great. I often drive by it, even though it's not my way home, I drive by it after the train, just to see it. It looks awesome. Looks really good.
Yeah, and the black ended up looking nice. Yes.
It does look nice.
Yeah, looks really good. So, yeah, and I know it's been a little frustrating with some of the delays, but I know we're getting through it, so it's good. All right, great. Okay, we move on to our business. Next, we have, oh no, I'm sorry, first recognition of the audience for agenda items only. We don't have any takers, then I'll turn it over to the PTA, and Ms. Allen's filling in today.
Thank you for always wanting to balance and manage. As a great show of appreciation, the PTA provides education in honor of our dedication to the community. Myers Givens for Education has finally completed that task, and we hope that it will pressure the whole community to educate students about the learning of these methods in the world and have a positive understanding of the knowledge. Thank you so much for your gentlemanly act. Really appreciate everything that you do for the education. Here are just a few other programs we have been doing in the past. This group of PTA bonds here has a private department. And Cottle Picture Day, our both banner cobbler team this week, our PTA dance program on actually Friday tonight, we have an outstanding award for training the youth. Our Halloween party for Cottle is on October 28. And our reason means, the group that organized it, or our country, that can go to the great store. And our first teacher, Karen, she's in Friday, October 21st, at closing ceremony. And I encourage you all to attend this one night, similar to what within that spring, where it's just a fun night for everybody to come and... These are just a few parts of our events that we have planned. Please get in while we're here, many of these events are a key for our organization. Thank you for having us. We see a... Yes. I know everybody hopes and we're aware of that.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you for your comments about the board, too. I also appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we can move on to our consent agenda. So I have a motion, do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 6? Any motion? Laura? Teres? Any discussion on any of these items? Nope? All in favor? Okay. Moving on to Business of the Board. First item on the Business of the Board agenda is to do our second reading, and then followed by that, we're going to vote in a policy amendment. This is Policy 5152. It's regarding admission of non-resident students for transportation. So essentially, I'm not going to read the entire policy. It's available on the public website to read, but essentially what the change to the amendment is, is that we are no longer covering transportation for out-of-district students. This was just a decision we made because, based on the additional cost. The tuition that we charge out-of-district students doesn't include the cost of that transportation. Transportation is pretty pricey. Now, very few students are actually impacted by this, because most students that come from out-of-district are special ed students who do have transportation provided to them by their districts, so it's not going to affect those students. It's just going to be for those few students that are actually gen-ed, out-of-district, tuition-paying students. So that's essentially what the change says. So that brings us to number 2, which is to adopt that policy. This is our second reading, so we can now adopt it. Resolve that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District adopts Policy 5152. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teres? Any discussion or comments on that? Everybody's good? Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. That brings us to number 3, Accept an Independent Auditor's Report. Resolve that the Board of Education accept the district's independent auditor's report for June 30, 2022. This is essentially the presentation we got today. Do we have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia? Any discussion on that? We already kind of talked about that, right? So, all in favor? Great. Next, Approve an Agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves an agreement with Capital Market Advisors LLC for fiscal advisement for the 2022-2023 school year at the following rates. For bond issues, a $7,500 base fee plus 50 cents per 1,000 par amount of bonds issued over $3 million. For note issues, a $4,950... Is that per note? For note issues, a $4,950...
Flat fee.
Flat fee, okay. Just got to word it a little weird. For continuing disclosures, $2,400 included, including all required material event notices. For additional services rendered by CMA personnel at the request of the district, such as state aid assistance, we will be billed at an hourly rate of $175 per hour. Do we have a motion? Laura? Teres? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, great. That brings us to number 3, Accept an Independent Auditor's Report. Resolve that the Board of Education accept the district's independent auditor's report for June 30, 2022. This is essentially the presentation we got today. Do we have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia? Any discussion on that? We already kind of talked about that, right? So, all in favor? Great. Next, Approve an Agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves an agreement with Capital Market Advisors LLC for fiscal advisement for the 2022-2023 school year at the following rates. For bond issues, a $7,500 base fee plus 50 cents per 1,000 par amount of bonds issued over $3 million. For note issues, a $4,950... Is that per note? For note issues, a $4,950...
Flat fee.
Flat fee, okay. Just got to word it a little weird. For continuing disclosures, $2,400 included, including all required material event notices. For additional services rendered by CMA personnel at the request of the district, such as state aid assistance, we will be billed at an hourly rate of $175 per hour. Do we have a motion? Laura? Teres? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, great. Next, Accept a Donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been offered a donation for the Tuckahoe PTA for the purposes of obtaining student planners for William E. Cottle students, and whereas a district would like to accept such donation, is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation for the Tuckahoe PTA in the amount of $1,552 towards the purchase of student planners for William E. Cottle students. The funds will be allocated to increase the Revenue Budget Code A2705, gifts and donations, and the Expenditure Budget Code A2110 dot four zero, I'm sorry, four five zero dash zero zero dash zero zero zero. Reg school supplies by $1,552. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Teres? Any discussion on this? Thank you very much, once again, to the PTA. Always great donations and great support. We appreciate that. Go ahead.
So just a question, are those planners, is that going to go on every year, or how does that work? Is that something new that we are going to do?
So it's a donate...
Yeah, I was gonna say we have.
This donation covers planners for this year, and this year only.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Yes.
Next, Approve a Transfer. Resolve that the Board of Education approves a transfer for the 2022-2023 school year not to exceed $21,000 from the estate of Angela Carapella Fund, and $14,000 from the estate of Lilian Kurtz Fund into the general fund, and to increase the general budget revenue line A2705, gifts and donations for an amount not to exceed $35,000, and increase the general fund budget appropriation line A2110 dot four zero zero dash O2 dash 10001, regular school contractual, high school, contractual, high school carapella donation, SAT prep for an amount not to exceed $35,000 for high school, high school SAT prep courses. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Teres? Any discussion on this? Again, once again, we'd like to thank those funds for their generosity. Every year, they've been funding the SAT prep, and it's a huge benefit, cost savings. All in favor? Great. Next, Approve an Agreement, which is tied to the one before. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the agreement with Jumpstart Tutoring to provide SAT and ACT prep for the 2022-2023 school year not to exceed $35,000, which is essentially what those donations will be used for. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia? Any discussion on that?
I actually want to just make a comment on that. But anyway, just based on that, thank you. We are going to do a workshop, just to let everybody who's at home might be watching. We are doing a workshop, and I don't know how the date off. I think it's December, I think it's the first week in December. Yeah, and just to keep, if anybody has any questions, or, you know, may want to listen to that, we are going to sort of dive into that a little bit, and we might have a person from Jumpstart Tutor here who runs the program there, so he's going to do a little presentation, so we'll do some Q and A there and discuss a little bit more about college prep. So just wanted to let everybody at home know that that's going to happen. Thank you.
And also on that note, I believe that it's the Carapella Fund, I believe that is. This might be the last year that that fund amount is going to be available to us. So it was a flat amount of money that has been dispersed each year, and I think this is the last year that fund is going to be available to us. Is that correct, Faith?
Yes, there's one more fund that might be able to carry into next year. We won't know until this year's done to see.
Right. Okay. So that's, you know, we have nothing but gratitude for that. It's been an amazing program, but we've kind of gotten used to having it, so we're going to have to, this budget season, I think we have to talk about, you know, what we may can or can't do in order to sort of hopefully keep this service going in some way, shape, or form. Yeah. Okay. Where am I? Robin? Oh, all in favor? Okay. All right, next is Approve an Agreement. No, I already did that already. That's number 7. We're on to 8 now. Approve an Independent Contractor Service Agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves an independent contractor services agreement with Catherine Gozmer for, sorry, for the 2022-2023 school year for professional development services at a rate of $100 per hour not to exceed $5,000, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement. Do we have a motion? Laura? Second. Laura? Any discussion on that? Dr. Goodman, can you maybe explain a little more?
So Dr. Gozmer, as you all know, was a teacher here. She retired. She was going to work with a group of teachers, particularly the AP teachers, to use data to support their instruction so that the students do as well as possible on the AP exam.
That's great. All right. All in favor? Okay. And lastly, for the Business of the Board Amendment Resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the amendment of Resolution E24 with Listening Partners Incorporated to read for the 2022-2023 school year of the meeting of the Board of Education dated August 22, 2022. Do we have a motion? Laura, second? Need a second? Somebody? Somebody second?
I'm sorry.
Teres? All right, any discussion on that? It's a sleepover here. It's a sleeping over here, it's not that long of a meeting, you're already falling asleep.
Sorry.
All in favor?
I'm gonna give my own.
All right, great. All right, last is personnel recommendations.
We have a teacher here tonight that I just wanted to say, she's the first. Ms. Davenport, if you'd like to wave to the board.
Hi, welcome.
We are delighted to welcome Angela Davenport back to Tuckahoe after your vote, hopefully. Angela has experience as a middle-school and high-school ELA teacher. She worked with our district most previously as a leave replacement in seventh grade, where she also taught academic intervention services. Over the past five years, Ms. Davenport has worked with struggling learners in various contexts. She brings to us experience in curriculum development for experiential learning and community partnerships. It is a pleasure to reintroduce Ms. Angela Davenport.
She's the first personnel.
Yeah, welcome back. All right, let's make it official. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves personnel action items A through K as outlined below. Do you have a motion? Laura, second. Lori, any discussion on any of these items? All in favor? Okay, that is it, and that brings us to our last, second recognition of the audience for any items at all. Anyone has anything? Ms. Mealy? Sure.
I'm Susan Mealy, I'm just right. I just want to comment on the last workshop that you guys held. Thank you very much for that excellent presentation that many other administrators presented, and I want to thank the trustees, especially the cause for the recognition of that, that you guys gave really great comments on that, and I felt that you were doing a really good job representing the community in both acknowledging that that presentation exceeded past presentations, that, you know, it was more transparent, it was more detailed, and I also appreciated your efforts to raise the body more, you know, I think it wasn't good in the district the long time, I know that we've made a ton of progress over the years, but there's still always more we can do better, and all of your comments, every single one of you who was there gave really great comments, and I heard everything you said, that there was more to be done, and I just want to applaud you, and I'm urging you to continue in that spirit, and I would like to, if we can, raise more awareness and communicate about your work, the work that you do, somewhere we can have, because it's important that people understand what you're doing, and I don't know if everybody's tuned in, and, you know, when it comes time to walk through trustees at this stage, if they understand what you guys are doing, what, really, they'll believe in making one of the decisions and their voting, and we want to keep this going, you know, and we can only be as good as the people who are running the district, so thank you for that, and...
Thank you very much for those comments, appreciate it, Ms. Mealy, thank you. Anyone else? Nope, that's it? All right, great. So, that's it, so we'll adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Teres, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night.